I'm Scott Martin, President and CEO of the Norman Chamber of Commerce, and I appreciate each of you carving down a little bit of time in your evening to be with us this evening. Certainly appreciate the candidates for making time to be with your constituents and to share your thoughts on the issue. So before we get too deep into this, will you help me thank our candidates for being here? Just a few of the ground rules for this evening, a little bit of information. We are recording this, we're willing, IT will work out as planned, and our hopes is to be able to post this in the previous forum that we had earlier this afternoon on social media tomorrow. So if you missed something this evening, you want to go back and watch it, or share it with some of your friends, there would be an opportunity to do that at some point in time tomorrow. We hope that we can get this live and on social media. And to our candidates, just a little bit of ground rules about how we're going to do this. One, one reason why I'm using the microphone is for the recording. So I'm going to be passing this back and forth, okay? I ask that you each utilize this and speak into it so that the recording will hopefully be as loud as possible. We have that speaker over there. As to the questions and answers, we are going to dismiss with an opening statement, jump right into the questions, and when we get there, you will each be allowed two minutes per question. One of my colleagues, the red shirt right there, she's got two cards. When you have 15 seconds left, she's going to give you a yellow card. When your time runs out, you're going to get a red card. But I'm going to throw something at you if you keep talking. But try to be respectful of your time, and that way we can get through as many of our questions as possible. And I tried to give you a little bit more time so that you can dig a little deeper into your thoughts and answers. So hopefully two minutes is enough. At the end, we will close with your closing thoughts. You will get 60 seconds for that, and then same will apply 15 seconds for yellow card when you have that left, and then the red card after that. So to our candidates, we are honored to have with us this evening Jeff DeSneeks, Ray Howerton, and Matt Peacock. Three of the five candidates award two. As a reminder, and I'll hopefully will do this at the end to all of you out there, the election is February 13th, next Tuesday. You can vote early in person though, this Friday, and Thursday, and Friday, from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM at the Cleveland County Election Board, Moore Norman Technology Center, South Penn Campus. And I think, if I read recently, I think they may be able to open another site at the Noble Public Library. And then of course, the polls will be open next Tuesday, February 13th, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Okay, let's jump right into these questions, and so we'll get after it. So regardless of where you live or what you do, homelessness is arguably the most discussed issue in Norman. So let's begin with three questions concerning this issue. And I've asked that you keep this first question, yes or no. The next two, you'll be able to really share more thoughts in regard to the issue. I promise I'm not going to leave you hanging with just yes or no. So the first question is simply yes or no. You'll have more time. So the first question. Would you oppose further expansion of the Gray Street Shelter? Yes or no, and then we'll get into some more details in a second.
Yes or no?
Yes, I'm going to oppose.
Repeat the question again. Will you oppose further expansion of the Gray Street Shelter?
No.
Yes and no.
I don't care more about that.
And I am going to try to shift who starts, so, sorry Jeff, that was a short start, but we're going to go to Ray next, and then we'll come back to you for more questions. So, Ray, we begin with you. What should happen to the Gray Street Shelter?
We should paint it, we should take it, and modernize it to where it fits best for the people that need it the most. We need great services, not even to just basic human needs, but to get them retrained, reworked, retooled, reskilled, and try to make them an active member of society, and that's what I'd like to see that shelter become part of.
Yeah, so I do support a 24-hour shelter, but I don't think downtown is an appropriate place for it. The reason I said yes and no is because currently that building is full of its vessels, and so the city has to spend money on its vessels to remove it. Currently, we were spending $15,000 a month on fire watch because that building does not have a sprinkler system. So adding a sprinkler system is a value add to the building, financially responsible thing to do if you're spending $15,000 a month opening it up. The reason why I would be against it is because I think that real estate is soon to be beachfront property as James Garner Avenue gets redone, as Main Street gets conversion to 2A, as the regional transit authority comes online and the commuter rail becomes active. I don't think that property is, I don't think a homeless shelter in that property is the highest use at that point. So that's really the part I'm wrestling with. I'm really looking forward to a staff presentation that we're going to have at our next council meeting that will really talk about what the cost benefit analysis of that program. But really right now, I just don't feel like I have to be dealt with too much.
So I think a lot of people would be surprised when I say that I would oppose that, knowing my background. I've worked in the agrohealth for a number of years, and I'm an expert in this area across the state, or so to speak, people have called me that, and I've certainly worked in this area quite a bit. We haven't done this right. The way we've done this with placing that shelter on Gray Street, and actually everything that Matt was talking about, we put it in a place where it's just setting up for negative consequences and further stabilization of these issues. It is placed in a building that doesn't have the same features that it does. It does not have wraparound services, and we aren't going to be able to expand those. Now, the other part of this that I would bring up is I actually don't support city funds funding a 24-hour shelter. And the reason is because I think there are other funds that need to come into this. I think that nonprofits can do this. I've worked a lot with the Homeless Alliance up in Oklahoma City. I love the way they do that, and how they have put that shelter together, how they have the wraparound services, job training, and other opportunities. Everything that we do with working with an unhoused population needs to have a path out homelessness. There are many different things that we can bring in and work to help do job training, help link people into services, and frankly, if we do that, we can build a workforce in this community and help people integrate and be part of Norman.
Thank you. So I want to make sure that because this issue is so far down, and I think complex, I want to make sure that you each have any additional time or up to two minutes that you would to say anything further, say anything further about the issue. So, long-term, how do you propose to address homelessness in Norman? Matt, we're going to start. Is it on?
Yeah.
Is it?
I have a bad voice.
We've got batteries in the back, so we need to, so. Yeah, break it down.
Wait. I work in this area. That's why I'm involved in the world. If you were to be better, it would just work harder. I would make the drive. Sorry, but you started to stand. So that's why it's a passion. It's not like I'm a fan. It would be a hell of a house. Yeah, that was something like that, or like on the way to the middle of that. It's like, because it's, you know, it's people's. It's actually gets in its people when you're back.
Right.
Hurry, move out, help them, what can't do. I get something like that. Plus, I'm a good service, there's so much more than we need to do. But we don't, we can't do it for them. Especially, I don't think it's serious. Hi. I'm sorry. I'm a good person. There's some sources that actually come in, there's several people, you know, that's.
No, it's all right. No. I want your answer. Testing? Okay. I'll just suggest that the previous candidates were very long-winded, and I think it's bad. So. There we go. Okay, that's fantastic. Okay. Good. Okay, so back to the question, we're going to get more restated. Alter, how do you propose to address homelessness in Norman? So this is on top of what we've already discussed.
So homelessness is not unique to Norman. It's actually a nationwide crisis, but there are a lot of things that we can do locally to start to try to address it. The first being better collaboration with the state and county on this issue. There's actually a state statute titled Section 53, uh, State Statute 53, Section 6, that says that the responsibility of the indigenous is actually that of the county, and currently I don't feel like they're actually fulfilling that obligation, so better collaboration with the county would be my first step. Beyond that, according to our home-based action plan, the biggest thing we can do is build affordable housing. And when I say affordable housing, I don't mean Section 8, I don't mean homeless housing. I mean affordable housing. In a Norman, that's a threshold of $1,200 per month. This is teachers, firefighters, and municipal workers. This is not homeless. Beyond that, what we can do is invest more in mental health and drug addiction treatment. I've got a very strong opinion that doing nothing is not a solution, and saying it's somebody else's responsibility isn't a solution. And I keep hearing about all these other entities that you can step up and fix this problem, but it's still a problem, we still have the problem. And so until everybody steps up and actually solves it, I feel like the city is the only one that I... Well, the city is the one who has the responsibility to fix it at this point. And so I am willing to put my efforts and my resources into making that happen. I think it's the right thing to do, responsible thing to do.
There's been weak leadership in the city taking care of this situation. We've had strong leadership by now to wrecking all the entities that we have, the different partnerships, different community involvement, and actually trying to get people to become more involved in helping this situation because it affects everybody in the community. It's not just one person's problem, it's not one business problem, it's not one family problem, it's everybody's problem, and it takes everybody to fix it. If you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. And we all need to get together and work things out, work things out. I'm no better than you, you're no better than me. Think how happy we'd be if we could learn to work together.
Well, I'm going to echo what my colleagues have said here. And I agree with what they're talking about. One of the things that we do need to look at first is affordable housing, but we also need to look at supportive housing, and some of the things that are really doing well here in Norman. I've worked with a couple of groups, Underbird Clubhouse, Transition House, and others who are really working well in this space, who are doing incredible things. I think we need to partner with those nonprofits and help them expand what they are doing. There are other groups that we need to bring in. I just heard about last week in talking to folks in the city that Mental Health Association is coming in. This is a group, you've heard me talk about Mental Health Association before, and this is a group that I've been begging to get into our community. They do incredible work in this area, just look at their calls to projects and what they've done with their housing in that area, but there are others also that we can bring in. We need to understand this, and we need to understand who this population is, and get a better picture across our community so that they also understand. We're talking about women fleeing domestic violence situations. We're talking about transition HU. You don't have supports that many of us take for granted. There are so many different people, this is you and me, with just having adverse circumstance in our life, and we need to realize this. Now, when we do talk about bringing in these other resources and taking on that responsibility, I don't think we need to be creating services, but I do think we need to make those services that we have in our community work. And that's where I come in, and I think I bring something to this discussion in that I know who these people are, and I know how to make them partner and start delivering the services, I promise.
Good. Okay, Jeff, we're back to you. We're back to you with this question. I'm not sure this is working. Do you guys hear it? Yeah. Well, we'll just.
We need to change that.
Yeah, we'll see that, but I'll keep going. We're going to. You all are here, so we're going to honor your time. You mentioned housing, some of you have. Norman is expected to grow at a rate of 1.5% over the next 25 years, reaching over 185,000 people by the year 2045. We're not on pace to have housing for that growth. In addition, housing experts recommend not focus on any one kind of housing, but rather encourage all forms of housing. How do you propose to address our housing needs?
Well, I think that is one of the things that we were talking about, and as we bring in opportunities for development, we really need to work, and I know what we're saying is not to focus on one sort of housing, but we definitely need to be focusing on development of more affordable housing in this community, but not just single-family dwellings, we need other opportunities. And certainly, and still a little bit from Matt, what I've heard him talk about before, that I think many people would, you know, board with here in Norman is also mixed-use development and things that we can do moving forward to really attract different people into our community. We need to make this a community in which all people can live. I can't even imagine, I have a son who just recently purchased his first home, and it was very different than when I, remember my wife and I purchasing our first home. I don't see how young people can come into this community. And apartments and the rent that we have is really shuts people out of being able to come into the community, but that also hurts us in our growth with being able to attract workforce and really bring the people in and the resources into this community that we want to see as we grow. And certainly with just locations throughout the community, we're going to be moving east, and we really need to get in front of that and think about the infrastructure pieces that we're going to need moving forward if we're going to develop these areas.
Ray?
We definitely need affordable housing. Norman Houston worked with, oh, you, with the pilot program, airplane program. We could get, work with like Norman Boat Tech and help work with the Boat Tech students, get them experience building houses, electrician work, plumbing work, and stuff like that, win-win to help build this. Big's probably facing Normans, we don't have a lot of land left. You do, but we're trying to protect it from around the lake, the east side of the lake. You can't go west, northwest past 36 and Robinson, it's too flat. I used to raise cars up there in high school, I can tell you the exact quarter mile once you go around that corner north on Western. But there's no drainage out there. We're going to have to build in town, and we're going to have to build up. We can't build out. There's just no way. You start building out to the north, to the east, you're getting into the watershed, Blue Creek, and getting into the watershed, Little River. And you're going to start affecting the water quality of the lake and what we have, and we're going to have to build groundwater too. So we have to look at areas within the city that we can actually put in affordable housing for everybody to live. Norman is a university community, and the housing costs have always been driven by the university. And so that affects Norman also. And it is very difficult to live here in the city, it's very expensive. And right now, from where I moved out of Arlington, Texas, from, the city's moving out, and it's taken too long to get here, there, and everywhere. And we need to start to bring in this back in and bring in everything in, and bring in services, and stores, and building, and everything to the people inside the city.
Matt, we'll try that. Mike there?
Yeah, so like has kind of been alluded to already, we need to make more efficient use of our land, which is our most, one of our most finite resources. We need to look at combating sprawl, fringes, we need to be more intentional with density. We need to build projects like ADUs, which are accessory dwelling units. That means basically an additional unit on an existing piece of property. Granted, lots of them are used as transitional housing, aging in place, young professionals. We need to build pattern zoning. What that is, is basically pre-approved building plans. What that does is it makes the approval process faster, it removes the need for rezoning, it removes the need for architects, being an architect, it pains me to say that. But all of this with the goal of bringing down the overall cost of the housing. And so bringing down the cost, passing those savings on to the consumer, I think that is how we get to housing, how we get a large quantity of housing. As was mentioned over here, building mixed-use projects with light-touch density, I think is really smart and forward-thinking. We need to push quality in build development so that investment in the core of Norman offsets the demand to build out in Ward 5, offsets the demand to build out 10-mile flats. Related to all of that, we also need to figure out our other finite resource, and that's water. Water is life, and we're really pushing the limits of that infrastructure, and since if we cannot secure that source, we can't sustain that growth, and really we just cannot sustain the future development.
Okay, Ray, we're going to begin with you on this question. Norman is blessed with many distinctive business districts, such as downtown, Campus Corner, and Brookhaven Square, to name just three. As a city council member, what would you do to support all districts in Norman?
Well, they each have their, they each have their unique personality and blend. Campus Corner is Campus Corner, man. I remember Cindy sitting down there in front of the town tavern, and walking around there and having a good time. I saw Tom Penny at Boomer Theater. So it has a unique draw to the college kids where like Brookhaven, Brookhaven was always a rich spot in town when I was growing up, or Hall Park. And so they have their, each unique. Downtown Norman, man, I lost my pup, I used to play billboards in, and I think there's a dispensary there now. But downtown, we need to keep it because it has a great history to it, it has a vibrant history to it, and we can really make it an attraction to people to come down and see what Norman is all about.
Yeah, so much like Mr. Howerton said, I think we leverage the events and the unique characteristics of each of those districts. They already have ready-made identities, so why reinvent that wheel? Let's take what is working and enhance it. Much like Oklahoma City has done with the Plaza, the Paseo, Uptown, Midtown, Downtown, Capitol Hill. These were districts that were already districts, and they just took some branding and some marketing behind them, gave it a budget, gave it an executive director, and really elevated the district as a whole. The ones that we have here in Norman, like was mentioned, Main Street being the Walker Arts District, and the Home 6th Friday, Campus Corner being the most urban place in the entire state, Flood and Eggers being an automotive district with some really cool warehouse buildings. I think there's some really great bones in Norman that we just need to take advantage of. And so what were tangible ideas would be to revive the bid discussions, business improvement district discussions, to really, again, really put a budget and a direct impact into these. Creating an incentive program for startups, much like the startup 405 Incubator. And then lastly, a TIP district master plan that allows these districts to not only work in tandem but feed off each other. And so I think investing in a holistic plan, then also invest in our alleys, our sidewalks, our leftover spaces, and really just makes the most of what we have already.
We've talked a lot about development in Norman and the different things that we could do. I think we have a lot of exciting opportunities, but we can't do that to the detriment of poor Norman. We really need to invest in Lindsay Street, Main Street, ensure that we're growing those opportunities. It's important that we're investing in downtown, investing in Campus Corner. And we have significant opportunity on the east side for development as our vital employer is ready to sell quite a bit of land. We need to be able to take advantage of that and ensure that we develop it the right way. I certainly look to incentive funding in these districts and really working with the business owners in these different areas of our community to see what their vision is. What is it that is hindering them from being able to operate in the way that they need to? Because we're still losing too many people out of Norman, and we need to really be attracting in business and providing different incentives for businesses to come in and attract the type of workforce, again, that we want within the community. And start thinking about the different things that can happen. I don't worry about people as they move out of districts from one district to another. We need to make sure that we're revitalizing that space that has been empty and provide that opportunity to develop that and move forward.
Driving business districts, great. Sales tax revenue for the city, so this next question's about that. Sales tax is a primary source of revenue for cities in Oklahoma. What is one city policy to drive sales tax generation and growth for Norman that you would be supportive of? Matt will begin with.
So, short answer is promote policies that build housing. Why is that? Because up until a couple of years ago, the only way that the city of Norman could collect sales tax was to chase commercial sales, meaning that we had to chase every strip center, every big box store, every commercial entity that would produce sales tax. Recently, Norman was able to start collecting taxes on online purchases. So, meaning if you order something off Amazon and you have it delivered to your house, Norman collects the sales tax off that. So rooftops act as revenue centers now, and so we should be building housing above all of this. Not only does it add population to our city, which will net a direct sales tax benefit, but housing is such a dire need, this approach just happens to kill multiple birds with one stone. And exactly why we need to go all in on new housing in Norman of all shapes and sizes.
The town has always been dependent on the residents to fund what the city drives. You have to build residency, it's the only way you're going to build the tax base. I wish I could say Norman had a lot of things going for it, it does, but the thing that would drive Norman in building the tax base is to increase Norman public school system and make it best in the state. And that would bring people in here, because we're a bedroom community. People work outside of Oklahoma, outside of Norman, you drive to the city. A lot of people do have businesses in here, and we need to support this. We need to support our locally owned businesses. We have to make them attractive to where they bring people in. And they bring new business in, new residents to the city to pay the taxes so we can keep improving and keep moving forward with our businesses, our local home businesses. I'm not into big chain stores or anything like that. You won't find me eating at a chain restaurant, you'll find me at, I wish Sinner Dairy Lunch was still open, but you'll find me eating at Mom and Pop places, you'll find me going into, I may, you know, have to point at the menu because I don't understand the language quite yet, and learn how to eat food. And just that's how we have to do and grow, we have to support each other. And doing that, we make the Norman attractive to bring in more residents, and bring in more diversity, and bring in more culture. It's what this town needs, it's, you know, we need to make it really attractive for everybody, and to do that, we have to promote our local businesses.
So it's kind of a chicken and egg thing. I agree, we need to be able to bring people into Norman, and the housing issue ties into everything else, but we also, what we had already talked about before, provide those incentives for those different businesses so we can help attract jobs. I'm an employer up in Oklahoma City, I would like to be an employer in Norman, but there are a lot of things that are going for me in Oklahoma City that I can't do here. I pay significantly less rent in Oklahoma City than what I can pay here. These are jobs that I would like to work at, but my employees can't afford to live here as we go through this. So it's a constant work, I think, moving forward. This has to be a regular discussion, not this little one-time thing where we talk about it. This has to be a constant discussion throughout the city and potentially pulling together more people to help make this decision other than just council members, bringing together members of the community to really provide that input, study the issue, and see where we can go.
Jeff, I think we're back to you as we're starting this round. So tax improvement financing districts have been successful in Norman, on Campus Corner, New York's North Park, and in the center city. So much so, the council is currently discussing a citywide TIP master plan. Would you support the use of TIPS for development in other areas of Norman? You can examine on that after you've, whatever you thought maybe.
But it's not just yes or no.
It's not just.
Yes, absolutely, but it's also something that I think we have to look at and make sure that's a kind of source that we need to utilize. I'm like a lot of people, in my first experience with TIPS, with what we had going on out at North Park, there were a lot of people in the community who weren't very happy with what was happening at North Park. But as I've come to understand, that these are things that we can really use to move forward, advance space where we're not necessarily collecting tax revenue right now, and set us up for the future, there are many opportunities with this. And it's not the only thing that I think we can utilize, but I do think we have to look at this if we're really going to attract new opportunities. We need to invest so that we can bring more money into the community, and we need to make smart investments as we go about that and smart decisions.
Yes, but no. It just depends on the area of the city it's in. I still like how it's kind of not an overall master plan. We look at each certain area to see if the TIF program would actually be beneficial for them. And taxes are so touchy with everybody when it comes to what we want to do with them, how we want to use them, and how we want to attain them. And so, that's why I support the TIF, but now, at the same time, like in U and P, nah, just I don't understand it really and truly. I don't know how the money's really helping those businesses up there versus taking away from the businesses in an area that's losing the business up in U and P. Penny Hill, for example, is someplace that probably didn't have, was part of the TIF district, and that kind of shut down because they just couldn't afford to be there anymore. And so, just, I don't know. I just, I'm too torn on to give you an answer.
So as the chair of the Business and Community Affairs Committee, this was actually my idea to bring forward a TIF master plan. I thought it was not only timely because of the U and P arena discussions, but also a must-do. I think it's really important that we show the community an overall strategy on how we plan to structure these TIFs, and how each of those different districts can start to play off each other and work together in almost a self-seding ecosystem. Also, I think it's really important to show the community that we have a commitment to all parts of Norman, and that we value an equitable approach for each unique district in Norman. I know U and P TIF is the one at the forefront, but we have a lot of very other promising, very exciting potential TIF districts in the work, and I think, I think everybody's going to be very excited when they hear what we're talking about.
Okay, moving from the general to the specific. From your understanding of the proposed University North Park Entertainment District, what are your thoughts on the project, and are you supportive? Ray, we'll begin with you.
I'm against supportive at all. It's away from the university. It's being built for a university arena, basketball, gymnastics, wrestling. No, it's taken away from poor Norman. It's taken away from the university. I've been in places, you can, you're going to put more asphalt down, you're going to put more concrete down, you're going to create more runoff. We already have that court sitting right next to Lloyd Noble. And then where I've been, Texas Rangers, when they built three stadiums, it's been all within a square mile of each other. They went from one parking lot to another parking lot to another parking lot building in their ballpark. We don't need to take OU away from OU and put it out on U and P. So I'm against the arena, I'm against the entertainment district, eight thousand seat arena. Yeah, we may get Darcy Lynn, but Paycom in Oklahoma City was ranked number three by Country Music Association as the music venue here in the United States behind Red Rocks up in Colorado and the Grand O'Opera. We're going to get Darcy Lynn, and they're going to get somebody like, what's Kelsey, Travis Kelce's girlfriend, whatever her name is. I'm sorry, I can't, I don't, I'm not a fan. So I can't lock her name up. But no, I'm against it. We need to keep the entertainment district around the university because that's really, that's 25,000 people that are around wanting entertainment, you know? And so why are we making it five or six miles away?
Yeah, so I think it's an intriguing concept, but for me at this point, I feel like I've got more questions than answers on whether or not I can support it. For me, the devil's in the details, and so, meaning who carries the risk? Is that the city or the developer? Does this put the general fund at risk? Are we subsidizing this area at the sacrifice of other parts of town? I don't necessarily think that TIFs are inherently evil. I've honestly seen Oklahoma City pull off 15 unique TIF districts with no casualty to their general fund, showing that it can be done. But, you know, we as council members, we have a fiduciary responsibility to protect the treasury of Norman, and so can't just blindly accept this tip without properly vetting it. As an architect, I'm more interested in the site plan. Is it walkable? Is it dense? Is it green? Does it have mixed use? For me, it's less about an arena proper, but what all of the arena district could support, like a weather experience, like tournaments at the YFAC, like other unique entertainment draws to Norman. And again, do those come at the expense of other parts of town? The southern portion of U and P is proven to be the highest traffic shopping district in the entire state, so I think it's hard to argue the financial success of the area. But an arena district needs to contribute more to the urban fabric than just dollars. And so for me, it's a much more nuanced question of just do I support TIFs, but do I support the holistic plan?
I think when I started in on this, I was a solid note against the arena, and as I've learned more, I'm open to this opportunity and really looking at what we can do with this. I agree, a lot of my, with Ray, and a lot of my decision was focused on just my connection to the university and what I wanted to, somebody who goes athletic events at the university. But there, this is a plan that I can see really making a difference if all our questions are answered about it. I'm worried about access from I-35 and what we're going to do with traffic. But I understand there's a plan there to make that happen, and that's something that I think we need. There's different opportunity within that area to grow that area out. It's not doing anything for us now as far as generating revenue, and so there's some things that we can do. But it is also something that I know is not just going to be confined to just that location. People are going to come into that district, and it's going to impact other parts of Norman also. But also what I mentioned earlier, we can't do this at the expense of rural. I mean, if we're going to make a plan to do that, we also need to have our plans moving forward and what we're going to do, again, Main Street, Lindsay, that's the area that really concerns me. What are we going to do to revitalize that and take that opportunity moving forward, attract business? And what are we doing at the same time with our plan moving forward with Campus Corner and downtown, and certainly on that east side? Even though it is not my ward, I am concerned about what happens on the east side. That's an area where we just don't have resources, and we need to develop those resources for our community to thrive.
Matt, starting with you. Utility franchises are operational agreements with the city, which solely address access to easements and right-of-ways to the benefit of the utility customers and provide benefit to the city general fund in multiple millions of dollars. The Norman Chamber of Commerce, Port of Raptors, has voted to support the OGNI franchise election. Will you be joining the chamber board and voting yes to approve the OGNI franchise election franchise on March 5?
So, long answer short, I support our utilities and franchises and willing to do what is necessary to maintain a high level of service from the city.
The ice storm in October 2021, my electric is the ops for almost 13 days. Yes, I absolutely support it, but I also think that we can improve our communication on this so that the community really understands what they're voting for.
Jeff, back to you. Norman Forward, Public Infrastructure Initiative was adopted in 2015 to fund quality-of-life projects with a temporary one-half to one cent sales tax. If we have extra time, let me give you three as post-top one. How about that? What would be your top three projects in Norman Forward 2? If you want to plug and say four, I don't care.
Okay. I think a couple of areas, and I've seen how this has worked in Oklahoma City with their MAPS projects, and I think this is a tremendous opportunity in Norman as we move forward. One of the areas that I talk about is incentive to attract in the right business, but I would really like to see, since we talked about behavioral health issues, what can, one of the biggest challenges there is workforce. What can we do as far as incentives to help bring not just behavioral health workforce in, but medical workforce into Norman? We're a community that just doesn't have a lot of specialty care. As any hand, and I'm someone who's had to work in that area and help people route into these areas, that's something that I could really see us doing and providing incentive moving forward to partner with some of these organizations that we've been talking about to advance. Oklahoma City recently did this with their funding of the crisis center. While we don't necessarily need to fund a crisis center, there are things that we can do to really enhance a new crisis center that is part of the plan for Norman to replace the crisis center that's out in the urban property right now, but certainly working with that workforce. I'm somebody who's worked in youth sports for a number of years, and I've looked around at our facilities here. I used to run the parks for Optimus and doing football and baseball, didn't have enough fields. It was three to five of us out there working on fields constantly. We need to invest in this and have better facilities. I travel around to columns around the country, to different locations for tournaments. These tournaments are incredible generators, revenue generators for our community. McKinney, Texas, when I think of that, and like Houston, when we travel down there, they're just all over the country. People have invested in this, and I would like to see us invest more in that and have more of these opportunities for kids within our community, but also maybe use this to make sure that all kids participate in these types of sports for Norman and then bring in teams from outside.
The music festival and the RIN fair. Those are two things that I would like to see improved. I've been to too many places and seen too many things and know too much, but we have a lot of room for improvements that we can do to make this Renaissance, make the Renaissance fair and the music festival attract and bring people in from out of town. And I don't want to take away from downtown, but most music festivals, flatbound to, would be out someplace along the South Canadian River, out in an open area where people could camp and have a good time in three or four days. Renaissance festivals are usually six to eight weekends long. The ones up in two have been in lots of, have she Scarborough Fair, Texas RIN Fair, which is down outside of Napa Rosa, and the Minnesota RIN Fair, which is out of Shakopee. And these things are just fantastic to see, and they bring in people from hundreds of miles around every weekend. The music festivals, you get some top-notch performers that are not really mainstream but backed off. You can get people in here, and they will spend money all over town. We just, we take over town, I should say. So that's two areas I see. Mental health will be one. I'm worried about Central State Hospital and the loss of the mental health facilities, and that's an area that I'd like to see the city pick up and start providing more services. But within that, Norman is an aging population because people come and go, and we're all, and that's, you know, the mental health and the aging population that help make sure that they have what they need to be taken care of. So, thank you.
Yeah, so I also look to Oklahoma City quite a bit for how to create a quality-of-life initiative that's successful. If you look at MAPS 1, that was some basic housekeeping items. MAPS 2 was all about schools. MAPS 3 was their, you know, their large quality-of-life projects, like the Scissor Cliff Park, a lot of really great issues. And the MAPS 4 was a billion dollars of social programs. They had so much success in MAPS 1, 2, and 3, by the time they got to MAPS 4, they were willing to, they were able to spend money on some wants, not some needs. And so I really like replicating that in Norman. As it relates to Norman, my preference for Norman Forward 2 would be making the entire slate an eco-tourism package that consists of expanded trails, a weather experience, lake thunderbird enhancements, a Canadian River Park, equine facilities, a crown jewel of reimagined Andrews Park. City Council just approved a revised master plan for Andrews Park. It was just simply beautiful. And the key behind all these projects is they generate increased tourism, which increases hotel tax and sales tax collections, the majority of which will be coming from residents outside of Norman.
Do you want to come to this question? So, and I think, Ray, we're going to start with you. If elected, how will you encourage partnerships between the city and other community organizations such as Chamber, University, County, local public schools, more regional health system, on and on?
Grab them by the ears and bang their heads together and understand and work together. It's a cohesiveness, it's cooperation. No, it's a joke, real folks. It's cooperation. It's getting everybody to understand we're all here. Nobody's better than anybody else. It's going to take everybody's help. If we sit here and look and point fingers, no, you need to be the no, 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 nothing's going to get done. It's going to take all of us saying, hey, it's our responsibility. It's our responsibility, not their responsibility or his responsibility or their responsibility. It's our responsibility. Until we can get on the same page and start realizing that what we really have in our dreams is making Norman the best town around, and that's what it takes. It takes that common dream. It takes, it takes love one another in the truest form to really get people to come together and work and get that. And we have to put aside our differences, we have to put our side of pettinesses, and realize that the city is what's important, and everyone is important in the city, not just one entity.
So I've been a registered independent for almost 20 years, and really pride myself on being a bridge builder and finding common ground with people, especially people that don't agree with me. I think in Norman, we only have to agree on one thing, that's we love this city. We're not going to agree on anything else, but if our hearts are in it, Norman, I think we'll all come out right on top. And so, much as Mr. Howerton said, we've just got to bring everybody to the table. We've got to be willing to listen to people that don't agree with us, we've got to be willing to change our perspective, we have to be willing to come across the aisle, have some very uncomfortable, hard conversations. They call them growing pains for a reason, and if we don't go through growing pains together, we will never grow together. So I very much feel that we need to come to the table together.
You know, the divisiveness that I've seen on issues in this community is one of the reasons I decided to run. We need to have more civil conversations about the things that collectively we all believe in and that we're all working for. I've been working in this field for a number of years and through my government experience, and that's what I've done. Everything is about, is about finding common ground and finding solutions. And I've done this not only in Oklahoma, but in Louisiana too. If I can do this in Louisiana, I think we can do this here. But this is really something that I think we ought, we really need to bring the community together and have real discussions and not be afraid of those real discussions. Sit down and talk about the things that make us uncomfortable, and that's how we're going to move forward. For whatever reason, I think we've lost that in Norman, and that's the reason I came back. My family and I, we moved away, I've lived in Denver, I've lived in Dallas, I've lived in Los Angeles, but we came back here. We've always wanted to come back. It's because of this community and our diversity and our willingness to continue to grow that diversity and have those discussions. We need to bring that back. That's a piece of Norman that we absolutely must step back. But a lot of this is going to be, have to be outreach, working with these two different groups to come together. And it's going to, we can start from the council end, but it has to be the rest of the community, and we also have to bring everybody in and give them an opportunity to be part of these discussions.
Okay, well, to be fair to our earlier candidates that were here from the other wards, I'm going to close off the formal round of questioning and end our forum with your closing comments. I think it will be as beneficial to those attendance to be able to chat with you one-on-one after the forum's over, if you're able to stay. We'll have a little bit of time. Melissa and I will not stay super late, but for a little bit longer, we'll be here, and that way you can interact with your constituents. So this time, we're going to wrap things up with the closing comments. We do have a little extra time, so if you want to take two minutes to post one, that would be fine by me. Matt, we're going to start with you and head this way, and Jeff, you'll wrap it up there.
So I was sworn into my first term as a council member in July of 2020, which, in case any of you forgot, was at the height of the coronavirus pandemic and the fallout from the George Floyd summer. Over the last four years, I have served during times of extreme partisanship, but I've always maintained my independent voice and found a way to center conversations around what is best for Norman, not what is best for a political party. I'm alumni of Leadership Norman, Leadership Oklahoma City, Leadership Oklahoma, Nature Conservancy's Leadership Academy, and the Citizens Police Academy. And I've also served on the Board of Directors for several nonprofits and as well as a planning commissioner for the city of Norman. Given my professional experience as an architect, a small business owner, paired with my syndic experience as a planning commissioner, council member, and mayor pro temp, I am confident that I am the only candidate that has the skill set and independent voice needed to lead War Two through these critical times.
I moved back here in 2017 for my health and my mom's church. She'd been 95 and there. When I moved back, I didn't plan on getting involved at all. I mean, I moved away from here in 1980. away from here in 1980 because this town, I was one of the kids that, this didn't hold anything for me. There wasn't anything here for me. I wanted to go out and see and seek and explore and experience life. When I was in high school in 1974, I left Norman High School in May and traveled to Fort St. James, British Columbia, and lived on the Stewart River, starting a ranch for about six months. I had no running water, no electricity, no telephone, especially no outside contact with the world. I lived out in Bush, Alaska. They're making television shows after what I did in high school, what I did in high school, okay? That experience right there, living that way of life, it makes you appreciate all aspects of life, not just what anything has. I mean, I had to keep a fire going so I could cook trout. I don't eat trout to today. It's a trash fish. So, okay, that's what I had to eat out of the river. I'm sorry, okay? Out of a tree. But my experience is not in politics. I worked nights all night. I ran large bank-armed computers for Allstate Insurance and Johnson &amp; Johnson. I processed billions of dollars worth of financial information each night and processed thousands of jobs in the information system. We had a schedule key we didn't get. Stuff comes down. We didn't do this. So, one of the big problems, one big process that were passed to my job was process improvements. And I had to continuously do process improvements. And that's where I feel my job experience will help Norman because I can look at processes and then improve them. And plus, I'm a hometown kid.
One of the main reasons for me, again, running were the issues with the unhoused and with mental health issues, behavioral health issues. And that's what I've spent my last 20 years doing. That's what I spend my time doing every day in my current profession and bringing these resources together, understanding where those resources are and how we can move forward to overcome stigma and get people linked in the services that they need, not just so that they can start on a path to recovery, but so that they can be well. There's so much divisive discussion that's occurred around these issues. And I believe that with my expertise in this area, I can move us forward as a community and know where those resources are and how to connect to those resources. But certainly, my experience in government, both at the state and federal level, I believe, gives me the ability to help us as a community find those resources and bring those different resources here to Norman, build those partnerships that we need, and create opportunity throughout our city. I'm, like everybody else, and like everybody up here, you know, we just want a thriving city. We want our city to be a place for our families, for our friends, and for our neighbors, something that we can be proud of. And that's what I bring to this. I absolutely am happy that we don't have to run on a political party because that shouldn't be the decision for any of us. I want to bring my experience for the betterment of everybody, and I want to listen to what everybody has to say so that we can find a direction to go that advances our city. Thank you.
Please help me thank our candidates for being with us tonight. And thank you to you for coming out tonight. I realize this was a little truncated. It's probably what you expected. As a general reminder, the election is February 13th, a week from tomorrow. If you vote early, though, on February 8th, 9th, remain six at County Election Board off Robinson Ward, South East Campus, or Norman Technology Center. Polls will open, though, at 7:00 AM on 13th and close at 7:00 PM. I encourage you to get out and vote. Thank you all for being here, and I appreciate our candidates. I hope you can stay around for a few minutes and engage those that are here.